Great. It is 7:03. So Josh, mute yourself again. There you go. 7:03, and I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville. Today is Tuesday, July 28th, 2020. It is 7:03 PM, and we are holding this meeting via Zoom. So we will start with roll call. Colette. Arts?
Here.
Josh?
Here.
Killian?
Here.
Klein? Stanley? Stanley? Oh, you have to unmute yourself, Isaac. There you go.
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Cop?
Here.
Great. All right, the first item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing. This is on Resolution 20-19, and it is relative to the 2020 sewer rates. And I believe this item will go with Howard. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The Public Service Commission held a telephonic public hearing on June 23rd to determine whether to grant our request to deregulate the sanitary sewer utility. The final decision was made on July 14th. The attached resolution was recommended for approval by the Water and Sewer Commission at their July 8th, 2020 meeting that would adopt the current sewer rates for the remainder of 2020.
Okay, so that's the staff presentation, and I would assume that's the applicant statement.
Yes.
Um, I have heard, I have kind of surveyed, I did not hear anybody in the audience before asking to give public statements in favor, nor did I hear anyone asking to give public statements against. And so I would assume then we would have no public statements in general. Uh, I'm going to, I have a 26th per, oh, Steve. Okay, Steve, I just can't see you because you're the, you're beyond my screen here. Council discussion. Um, Robin, anything?
Could we have a reiteration of a simple explanation as to why we are doing this? Or as response to why it was passed, just a...
Howard, you want to do that, please?
Sure. In the state of Wisconsin, sanitary sewer utilities are not required to be directly regulated by the Public Service Commission. At the time, we were one of a very few handful, five or six, of the entire state that were regulated. The issue here is that when you're under regulation, when you're under their regulation, they have the power to establish the rates for the community, and it generally takes a long time for them to go through the review process and allocation process. And you have certain gates and criteria that need to be met. We felt that, especially with our industrial customer and with other things, that we needed to have the flexibility to establish them locally. You know, recommended by staff, recommended by the Water and Sewer Commission, and then approved by the Common Council. And I'm just looking to continue the current rate structure for 2020 while we discuss what and how large of an increase we might need for 2021.
Thank you. Okay. Jason, any questions?
Um, no other questions right now.
Kathy, any questions?
No questions.
Ken, Killian, any questions?
No questions.
Eileen Nichols?
No questions.
Isaac?
No questions.
Okay, if there, this would then have been the council discussion portion. So the next item on a public hearing is a motion to close the public hearing, if we're done with discussion. And it appears we're done with discussion, so I would take a motion.
I move to close the public hearing.
I'll second that. We have a motion by Ken and a second by Eileen to close the public hearing. Colette will vote. Arts?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
And Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item on a public hearing would then be any proposed action. So I would take a motion for any action that a council member would propose.
I'd make a motion to approve the Resolution 20-19 adopting the current sewer rates for the city of Platteville.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Isaac and a second by Ken to approve the current sewer rates, the 2020 sewer rates for the city of Platteville. Colette will vote. Arts?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries. Yeah, the next item on the agenda is the consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you would prefer separate discussion or action on any of the items. Number one are the council minutes from July 14th, the regular meeting. Number, or the letter B is payment of bills. Letter C is appointments to boards and committees. And tonight I have an appointment to the library board to fill a partial term that will end on May 1st of 2022. And that appointment is Emily Zachary. Licenses, the one and two-year operator licenses to serve, sell and serve alcohol wearing the packet. Ratification of the city of Platteville's state of emergency enacted July 17th. This is just a continuing state of emergency declaration that corresponds with COVID. And last one, Resolution 2020, application for exemption from the levy of any county library tax. And this is a customary and usual motion we pass, or we, we have it this time of year. So folks, what's your pleasure?
I have a couple of questions on the item E. I don't know how much discussion is needed. I just had a couple of questions, so.
Go ahead and add them.
Go ahead and ask the questions rather than pulling it up. Okay. I was just wondering if there's any way that we keep record of what actions are taken under this authority? Does that make sense? Any items that you may normally run past the council that you use this authority to make those decisions? Is there a running record of that?
I would say the only thing that has been not customary would be the, I guess a good example would be at the last council meeting, we had the restaurant permit. Instead of having an information and discussion that was brought in just as automatically an action item. Other than that, everything primarily I have tried to put on the agenda, or at least give you guys an update by email of anything that's going on. But for the main portion of the reason why we keep doing this is just to ensure that in the event COVID-19 would, you know, take a drastic turn, or there would be issues with council members not being able to, we did need to make some decisions. That flexibility is there. But again, as part of my role is to make sure that, I try to bring as much as we can to you guys for consideration. So this is really kind of a, it's an emergency situation. So it would be if we had to, you know, again, worst case scenario, suddenly the majority of staff are coming down with, you know, COVID-19, and we have to consider a temporary space for buildings. Those are some of the things to consider. But otherwise, again, I would say very rarely so far through this process have we not been able to meet Zoom to handle the normal day-to-day business.
That was just another reflection, was there some verbiage in there saying, like, due to it being an illness that we can't come together as easily? But utilizing Zoom is totally appropriate. So I guess that verbiage was just a little bit awkward, but it's not that we're short, shorting that process in any way. You have, you use Zoom. It's all good.
Yep.
Yep. I don't have anything else.
Okay, so do I get a motion on the consent?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Robin to approve the consent calendar as presented. We'll vote. Colette? Arts?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Next on our agenda are citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. And so Josh, Mr. Butson, you can turn on your microphone and give us your comments, observations, and petitions. Okay. I'll start with your name and your address.
My name is Josh Butson, president of the Platteville Dairy Days Committee. And I have a brief statement regarding this year's Dairy Days in due of the circumstances as to why you guys are all meeting this way. After careful thought and much debate over the past several months, the Platteville Dairy Days Committee has decided for everyone's health and well-being that we would cancel this year's Platteville Dairy Days for 2020. We held off on deciding as long as we could in hopes that COVID-outlook would be better so that we could hold modified festivities of some kind. Dairy Day strives each year to bring the best that we can and plan to do so September 10th through the 12th of 2021, and hope to see everyone there.
Well, Josh, thank you for sharing that, but it is a sad day that we have to hear this news. And I know that lots of people put in lots of work for this event and have put in a lot of work already for 2020 that now is not possible. So thank you for sharing, thank you for your committee's deliberation, and for the very difficult decision that you made. And I guess that's what I would say. I don't know of any other council member. Robin, anything to say?
Just a thank you for all the time and energy that goes into it.
Jason?
Echo the same thing, yeah.
Kathy?
Yes, I've been still somewhat involved in the committee, and they did have a meeting last night, and it was a very difficult decision. It was very sad, but they had a lot of discussion, a lot of input, just too many factors that weren't going to work out.
Okay. Ken?
Well, just to say thank you for the past Dairy Days.
Yep. Eileen?
I would echo that. Thank you for the past, Josh, and thank you for already planning for 2021.
Okay, and Isaac?
Nothing more.
Okay, well, thank you, Josh. Don't come back to us with this news again, okay?
I hope not to. Thank you all for your time, and especially Kathy, thank you for the help that you've been guiding us through.
Okay, great. That's all of the people that I am aware that want to speak at this time. Brent is here just watching, and I don't, and Ben, you're here for strategic planning, so I think we'll go on. All the reports in the pack at this time, where the library board, anything to report? Robin?
Just in that, you see that we are working on kind of a diversity and inclusivity statement, and that was postponed for further discussion. And there was a special meeting held, and it was again determined to postpone anything conclusive, kind of waiting on the city to kind of, you know, see what's going on there, but also just to allow more opportunity for input. So just clarification on that. Otherwise, nothing else.
Kathy, Airport Commission?
One update, the Boy Scouts Pancake Breakfast that was scheduled for this Sunday, unfortunately, has also been canceled.
Yep, I saw that, and that's sad, too. Community Safe Routes, Jason?
Um, nothing much else to add, though. The one thing is, is that we've been working with the Planning Commission and hopefully going to be doing a review of sidewalk ordinance. So that's kind of the combination that's been going on.
Okay, great. Okay, next on our agenda are action items for the night. So the first action item is Resolution 2021, which deals with the Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, CMAR 2019. And this would be for the water and sewer or for our utility. So Howard? I think that's you again.
Yes, it is. Thanks. The CMAR is an annual item that needs to be submitted to the Department of Natural Resources. Normally, it is due by June 30th. Due to COVID-19, the deadline was extended until August. It's a self-report on the condition of our treatment plant, the collection system, the experience of our people, our financial and managerial capacity for, to run the system. We have an excellent system with very experienced staff. And under the DNR requirements, the council needs to approve a resolution that you have reviewed and approved the submission for the CMAR for calendar year 2019. Water and Sewer Commission reviewed and recommends approval.
Okay, so we have a recommended, we have the CMAR report. We have a recommendation from the Water and Sewer Commission that that this be approved. We will make a once around here for questions. Robin?
No questions.
Jason?
Nope.
Kathy?
Just a comment, very impressed with the report.
Ken?
No addition.
Eileen?
No questions.
Isaac?
Auditions.
And I would like to cite that Isaac chairs the Water and Sewer Commission. So Isaac, thank you for your leadership there, and to our Water and Sewer staff for the excellent work they do. And so now might I get a motion about the CMAR for 2019?
I move to approve Resolution 2021, accepting the Compliance Maintenance Annual Report for 2019 and authorizing staff to submit the report.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Kathy to adopt Resolution 2021. Colette will vote. Arts?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries. Great. Next, we're going to move on to the COVID-19 Temporary Outdoor Bar Permit Application. I'm trying to get to it on my, I gotta do all these weird things to be able to get to anything. All right, so Adam, is that you as my presenter?
That is me to kick it off. You are correct. So again, just to kind of recap, at the last meeting, the council made the determination to allow restaurant and bar owners who serve food to apply for an outdoor seating permit, where obviously the food portion would be allowed either in a sidewalk or a parking stall. The next step in the process would be to allow restaurant or bar owners the ability to apply for a permit, which would allow patrons being served in those designated areas, the ability to consume beer or liquor. This is something that staff has met a couple of times over the last two weeks in researching how other municipalities, such as the city of Oshkosh, West Bend, Lake Geneva, and city of Sheboygan have kind of created similar processes to allow for temporary outdoor seating where they can consume food and obviously beer or liquor. So attached to the summary sheet was a proposed kind of outdoor bar seating area application. Some of the changes we did based on the feedback we got from the last meeting was really highlighting that, again, this is a temporary permit. This is not something that they can, you know, continually have or extend. If they want to do something more permanent or long-term, they have to go through the normal municipal code standards or licensing processes. Again, the discussion at the council meeting last time was to allow it to go till October 31st, and then also put in the requirement of hours being that they could operate from 4:00 to 10:00 PM on Monday through Friday, and then 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM on Saturday and Sunday. We did reach out, Candace reached out to the Department of Revenue and did receive confirmation that the city of Platteville does have the authority to issue an extension of the license. So I don't know, Candace, if you want to kind of elaborate a little more on that and kind of what that was, but essentially, we have the ability to use this permit to extend their license, and I guess I'll let Candace kind of add in what she got from the DOR.
Sure, so the Department of Revenue basically says that we have the ability to extend, just like Adam was saying, extend their license. Along with that, though, we're going to do this in relationship with the application and have them basically draw out what that would look like so that we have a clear understanding, they have a clear understanding, their patrons that would be coming, or customers would have a clear understanding, law enforcement would have a clear understanding if anything should have to be enforced or anything like that, as well as the Department of Revenue if they were to come and do some sort of a random check. We would not touch the license that they currently have and that they currently display. This would be an additional license that would have to be displayed in the same manner, but it would be displayed along next to their permanent liquor license that they already have so that we can have it, you know, go until if it's approved that it's the October 31st sunset date or deadline there, then it's no longer valid after that. A question for me beyond that?
I do have a question. You said that there was, they would have to have another license. Does that mean they have to pay another fee?
No, I believe it's my understanding. No, no, definitely not additional $600 or anything like that. I think additionally, initially, we were talking about a small fee, but I believe that that has been something we've struck. We haven't decided to move forward with that.
Because I think in last week's, there was a $10 application processing.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't talking about a license fee, like they pay on July 1st.
No.
Just wanted to make sure. In the materials, there are a couple of places where it still says October 1st rather than October 31st, so you're going to have to look through that. And as much as I could, I could not find the 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM or the 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
So that under, if you look at where each applicant will need the following to be processed and reviewed, it has the numbers, it is number six. Acknowledgement that the allowable hours of operation will be from 4:00 to 10:00 PM on Monday through Friday, and 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM on Saturday and Sunday.
All right. Before, I have two people, I believe, who want to speak, but before that, any questions, clarifying questions of Adam or Candace? Robin, clarifying questions?
No, but I do want to state, I feel like I should recuse myself from this vote. I didn't realize that my business partners were already looking into some of this stuff prior to the last time, so I would just, I think I'll lie low in this conversation.
Okay, thank you. Jason, any clarifications from Adam or Candace's information?
Do you know roughly how many business bars owners are kind of looking to do this? Do you have like a rough idea?
There's two for sure that I'm aware of. So I know Second and Main has mentioned that they're interested, as well as Los Amigos has brought up some, some interest. And I think as Robin said, there's, there's some other, you know, ones that have talked about it, but I know for sure those are the two, and Jack may be able to, when he speaks, provide a little bit more of that. That's what I know for sure has contacted us.
So we're going to let Jack speak here shortly, and then Mike Osterhaus is also on the line, and he might want to speak. So this is basically asking for clarification of the material that Adam and Candace provided. Ask any questions on, clarifying questions on that information provided by Adam and Candace?
One, one other one I have is if, I know a lot of the bars down on Second Street, a lot, some of them already have outdoor seating. Are they still going to be eligible for this extension as well? Or are you looking more towards businesses that don't have those outdoor seating areas already?
If they submitted, we would look into that as a potential option as well, so it would be.
Correct.
Kathy, any clarifications from Adam or Candace's information?
No, not, but I do have a question. Any concerns by either Doug or Ryan? If this is implemented from an emergency services standpoint?
I think it's on the review committee. Doug, if that's your iPad, it's a heck of a noise. Is he on the council? I'm turning off.
We're going to try and experiment.
I think both Ryan and Doug are on the review committee. Kathy?
Okay.
Is that right, Doug? You're on the review committee? Ryan, you're on the review committee?
Right, and we were given the opportunity to weigh in when the staff reported.
Okay, good.
Nothing that jumps out that we wouldn't address during the application process, so.
Okay, Ken, any clarifications on Adam's and Candace's information?
No questions.
Eileen?
Well, I just, not necessarily a question, one question, I guess, one comment. I noticed in the information that the applicant has to fill out, it says no glass containers. So that means no bottle of beer outside, no brandy old-fashioned sweet in a glass, or I guess just so people are aware of that. And then I was wondering about porta-potties. I would hope we are not allowing them. I know it made clear that you had to make your bathroom in your establishment available to the people sitting outside, but we had a concern a while back about a bar that had a porta-potty outside for quite some time. So I don't know if we need to add that, but I hope that that would not be allowed.
No, I think that would, staff would consider that no.
Okay. Isaac, any questions on Adam's or Candace's information?
I guess the only question I have is, so last, at the last meeting, we approved the restaurant portion of it, and this part would be for the taverns. So now if, we'll say Second or Main or Steve's Pizza, which one now they wanted to serve outside, which one would they be applying for?
They would apply for the whole. So they would, restaurant and then also for this one.
Okay.
Okay. Mike Osterhaus, you're on the line somewhere. I can't see you, I can just see your name. Are you wanting to speak on this particular? Are you wanting to speak on this particular item? If so, let me know somehow. Mute your mic or unmute yourself or something. Mike? I think he must not want to speak. Okay, Candace, or not Candace, Jody, I understand that Jack Luke is with you, he would like to speak.
Good evening, my name is Jack Luke, I'm the executive director for the Platteville Main Street program and I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance for the bars. With discussions I've had with the restaurant establishments on Main Street, they would take no benefit to serving food outside unless they could accompany that with a alcoholic beverage, i.e. Los Amigos with margaritas and the other establishments with beer or similar cocktails. And I think it's very important for our community to look at what's happening across the state where communities are doing everything they can to keep these restaurant facilities and bars as viable as possible because we're going to be losing them if we don't. And this morning, in fact, just to emphasize that commitment a little bit, even the DOT came out with a statement indicating that communities that had highways through, as their Main Street, could in fact come out and serve food and, I assume, beverages on state highways, which never happened before. So after I speak to the restaurant owners in the downtown area, they really have two wishes that they've expressed to me. One is that they hope the city council recognizes that, that they really need this to, as an alternative to offering it to people that will come down, will sit outside and dine or have a drink, but will not go into an establishment. The second point is, they want you to realize it has to be kept very simple and put the onus of the control on them. They have a lot at risk, whether their food licenses and with their liquor licenses, that they would control this and that if they are going to be required to move it in or open it up on a nightly basis and set it up on a nightly basis, that it has to be something that is very simple to do. That, that basically is the message I have and to the point that was, the question that was asked before, there are probably four downtown locations that I know would take advantage of this and possibly one or two more. Any questions of me?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
Barb, if I, could I ask, I just want to say one more thing and it has to do with outdoor activities. We've had two very successful music in the park where people have gathered outside and are very thankful that they can do so. They've been respectful of each other and I want to thank the city for their cooperation with us in putting those on and allowing this to use City Park. And as in the past, people have brought their alcoholic beverage with them, wine or beer or whatever they choose. And for the last five or six years, we've had zero incidents with that and I really appreciate the city letting us do that.
Okay, thank you, Jack. I did try to contact Mike again just to see if he wanted to speak. He has not responded, so I believe I've been around and asked everyone who wanted to speak. I am assuming that you mean beer, wine, and liquor, not just beer and liquor. Candace, is there a need in the, from a liquor law standpoint or from a licensing standpoint to say beer, wine, and liquor? Or can you just say beer and liquor and it's the same thing? Because I've noticed that wine is not included and, you know, that, that might not go well. Go ahead.
It would depend on what kind of license they have. So if they, for instance, if they only had a beer license, they could not be approved for like a liquor license. Liquor license includes wine, so beer, wine, and liquor. But if they already have, it's a Class B liquor license, that would include all three.
Okay, so somehow we have to probably note that, that the license, that the temporary license would mirror their regular license in what could be served.
Correct.
It doesn't, it's not, it's not more restrictive, nor is it more expansive.
Correct.
If you can serve wine now, you can serve wine outside, if you can serve liquor now, okay. And Eileen, I think they make plastic cups. I just wanted you to know that on a personal note. All right, I've been trying to see if Mike, Mike, this is your last opportunity, do you want to speak?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm here, I'm trying to multitask and do a very poor job about it. Which, which seems to be par for the course with me. I really don't have anything to add to what I've added from last week. I think it's important that if you're going to do the approval of the liquor portion of it, that makes it way more desirable, especially from our standpoint of dealing with the setup and the takedown. Personally, if the liquor portion or if the drinking portion, I guess not liquor, isn't associated with it, it is a little bit less desirable from our standpoint.
Okay. All right, I will do a once around to ask if anybody has any additional questions. Robin, I'm going to skip you because you noted that you would be recusing yourself from this. Jason, any comments or?
Nothing else right now.
Kathy?
Nothing else.
Ken?
I was looking at the number of occurrences of the virus illness taking place. I don't think it's a good time to increase the, the location of the bars outside.
Okay. Eileen?
I guess just so that the public understands Isaac's comment, this is for restaurants as well as bars, the title of this is temporary bar outdoor seating area. And so that almost lends itself to think it's just bars, but it is restaurants and bars. I don't know that we need to change that, but just so the public is aware of that. And I know that in the application, it also clearly states you cannot have an outdoor bar. And again, there might be a little confusion about that. So those are the comments I have.
So no outdoor bar and no outdoor porta potties. Okay, Isaac, any questions? Any comments?
Nope.
Okay, so does anyone have action?
I would move to authorize the creation of the city of Platteville COVID-19 temporary outdoor bar seating area permit application process.
I'll second.
And, and Eileen, you would sit, you would probably include the addition of the no porta potty?
I would include the addition of no porta potties and also clearly state that this is bar and restaurants.
Sorry, she had to clarify her motion. Kathy, is that okay with you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So Colette?
Okay.
We're now going to vote and Robin has recused herself.
Okay. Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Oh.
Line has recused herself. Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you all and we'll now move along to action item C, which is contract 8-20 highway painting. Howard, I believe you are on again, wherever you are.
Yes, I'm here. Yes, we do annual painting contract for center lines and other pavement markings. This year, we intend to repaint Main Street now that we've got brand new pavement down and we also are looking at Commercial Drive from Business 151 to Progressive Parkway near Walmart. We sent the bid request to two firms, we received a bid from one firm. This firm has satisfactorily performed in the past. The bid is below budget, so we're recommending awarding the bid to Century Fence at the stated bid price.
Okay, stated bid price is $28,837.
$28,837.
Okay, Robin, questions? Jason, questions?
No.
Kathy, questions?
No.
Ken, questions?
Is this the one with alternate bids on it, Howard?
Was there alternate bids?
There, there were no alternate bids and I removed that error from this version of the packet.
Okay. Eileen?
No questions.
Isaac?
Nope.
Okay, so then I guess we'd be looking for a motion.
I move to approve contract 8-20 highway painting to Century Fence for the bid price of $28,837 and 50 cents.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Jason, a second by Kathy to 8-20. Colette will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Unmute yourself.
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item on our action agenda is contract 11-20 Engineering Design and Studies Services 2021 to 2023. Howard?
Okay, thank you. We contract with engineering firms to do design work as required since 2010. Delta Three has been the firm doing this work. We sent out requests for proposals to a number of different firms for a three-year contract with the possibility of up to two one-year extensions. We received letters from I W Fran that they were not going to submit proposals at this time. We did receive proposals from Delta Three Engineering, MSA, RA Smith. All three are excellent firms. We've worked with MSA before and they, and we use them for specialized work at our wastewater plant. We have not used RA Smith, but I'm familiar with some of their individuals. Delta Three Engineering has performed very well over the last 10 years, has a, an excellent working knowledge and relationships with the staff and their rates are more affordable. So I'm recommending that we award the contract with the potential for up to two one-year extensions to Delta Three Engineering.
Okay, questions? Robin, any questions?
Mute.
There, I'm unmuted. I guess I'm just seeing a $5 rate per hour increase every year, so maybe, I don't know if we go that far into it, but there are ways to like know what percentage of that goes to payroll versus overhead. 5% rate increase seems generous, but yet I understand there's overhead, so that's all I'm thinking.
Okay. Jason, questions?
Nothing else.
Kathy, questions?
No questions.
Ken, questions?
No questions, just a comment. I do appreciate the times that I go out with Delta Three to look at things, so I feel that's important to do, so I thank them for that. Thank you.
Eileen, any questions?
No questions.
Isaac, any questions?
No questions.
Howard, Dan, I see you're on, do you have anything you want, any comments you want to make?
No, no additional comments at this time.
Okay, Howard, any additional comments you want to make?
No, not really.
Okay, then I believe since this is an action item on our agenda, we should hear some type of action.
I'd make a motion.
Can I make a comment?
Oh, certainly, Robin.
Yeah, I'm sorry that I brought something up as I was observing it, but I see all of the other professional rates and the principal was, he's much further under those, so I'll take back my comment as stating his modesty at the same time is looking for a little bit of a rate increase, so.
Okay.
I will make a motion to approve Delta Three. Now I'm moving back there, so sorry I jumped in on you there, Isaac. Moved to award contract 11-20 Engineering Design Study Services for 2021 through 2023 with the potential for up to two one-year extensions to Delta Three Engineering.
So Isaac will let you second that, so we have a motion by Robin and a second by Isaac. That sound okay, Isaac?
Yep.
Okay, Colette?
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the action items on our agenda tonight, so now we'll move into information and discussion. The first of these items is the inclusivity update, so Adam?
That would be me. So again, this is something that as one of our strategic goals for 2020 was to continually have inclusivity conversations. So as of right now, again, we have a draft inclusivity statement that has been out and tried to garner some feedback. We'll be honest, we have not gotten a lot of feedback regards to the inclusivity statement. So I know council members have heard, our intention is, we're probably going to try to see if we can get a little bit more feedback and then at the next council meeting, we'll ask if this is something that the council then wants to have brought back as a potential action item. We're going to give that a little bit more time, so again, I just asked that when you're talking, obviously on the community with peers, just ask them what they think about the statement. Again, this is a statement, it's a starting point of trying to just give the council and give staff and just community members a better understanding when we're looking at policies, procedures, certain things that we should always be considering in regards to, you know, race, equity, religion, creed, you know, all aspects and just again, trying to ensure that all of our policies are being as inclusive as possible and welcoming as possible. So that's something that we'll also bring back at the next meeting to see again if there's been any more feedback and then get a little more, you know, thought process or from the council on where you would like to go after that. Obviously, we have continued to do community dialogue sessions to try to, number one, just again, try to be that welcoming community that gives feedback and explains what exactly our commission
again, try to be that welcoming community that gives feedback and explains what exactly our commissions do. And then also just the overall civic engagement argument that we're always looking for, you know, residents to get involved or give their opinions and join our committees, commissions, and boards. So we hosted on July 21st, Park and Recreation Meeting. Again, we did hear a lot of feedback about the process and this is something that staff, you know, with COVID-19, we continued to try to do things differently. And we're continuing to look at ways of, you know, potentially, there's been, I've heard from council members about, you know, should we discuss in council meetings to an earlier time? That's obviously something we can consider through this process. There's been some conversation I've heard from the community about, you know, potentially, would there ever be the option that the city would provide, you know, a form of daycare during meetings so that people could attend? That's something that potentially could be talked about with either the school district or maybe the university as a partnership there. So I think there's some things that we can continue to look at to try to find ways to, again, make the process as open as possible. We do again, try to host them at night to allow people and that's usually when all our meetings are because that's been kind of the tried and true way of when most people are available to come to a meeting, it normally is at night, not during the day. So some of the other things, obviously, that were discussed in that meeting was just to be more aware of some of the wording in our plans and how they could be perceived by different races. For instance, the concept of the word master came up as, that is, can be considered an offensive term for people of color. So I know Luke and the recreation staff have already started going down that road, looking into, you know, making sure that our plans, appropriate verbiage and that we're just kind of cognizant of that. Obviously, the conversation of pictures coming up, making sure that we're showing diversity and that something that we always take into account, but again, appreciate that feedback and want to make sure that in many publications we're doing, we do try to show the diversity that we have in our community. Also, conversations came up about programming. Definitely, the concept of a community center came up. So that is something that we continue to look at and even came up in our fire department conversations that we had about that could be a potential, you know, add-on to the fire station, could be a community center and looking at potential programming there. And then there was some conversation about, you know, the potential of discussing renaming of certain parks and obviously, you know, buildings and also streets. Indian Park came up as one that there was some feedback that they potentially would like that reviewed at different committees to talk about, either getting a better understanding of why it was named Indian Park or some feedback there is potentially to change. And then obviously, you know, the name Roundtree came up. Luke obviously was at that meeting, so I don't know, I'll kick it over to Luke. Is there anything you want to add, Luke, that I forgot?
No, you, I have a checklist and you hit my checklist items, so yeah, I think you did a good job reviewing the main points of the meeting. It was a good discussion and something, like I said, as you mentioned, we're already trying to make changes to within our, you know, was our master plan, now it's going to be our comprehensive plan. Just feeling that was not going to be a controversial issue in terms of changing that name. I didn't know, think there was going to be anyone that would be offended by flipping that name to something different if it would be more helpful to others, so we've already started that process. You know, you hit everything on my checklist that I wanted to review.
Great. And then obviously, we had other council members there, so I'd be more than willing to kind of open it up to the rest of the floor there. We do have a couple of other, we have two other sessions currently scheduled. One is obviously next Tuesday, and that's going to be focusing on the strategic plan, so we'll get into a little bit more detail probably in the strategic plan section. But it's going to be very similar, asking the community, really focusing in on the key questions of the strategic plan, which is, you know, the same questions that we're going to be discussing tonight. Do you feel these are the community values? Do you feel these are the strengths? Do you feel these are the buckets? And then kind of that same homework assignment that you guys had where think six months out, think one year out, think two years, three years, and then if you had a magic wand and money was no object, what would you do? We've been working with the SOAR on a strategic plan, so that's something we hope to kind of finalize this week. And we'll start to get out various emails and put that information to get over the next kind of month or two here. And then obviously, on August 19th, we're planning to do a community dialogue session about the museum, just to talk about their committee and then get some feedback there. I did meet with the university and also the Platteville School District to talk a little bit more about their bias incident team. And this is something that obviously Barb and I have had conversations on and we're kind of looking into the concept of, you know, how could this potentially be put into either a city committee or a subcommittee? So those are some things that we're going to discuss at future meetings. But that's kind of the quick update that I have, and then I guess I also wanted to give an opportunity for staff and council members to kind of give any feedback you've heard and go from there.
I think for me, I was at the Parks and Rec meeting. And just to clarify, the piece about Roundtree that came up, and I think there's been a big push, especially since that research came out. I believe there was research, a history professor on campus had some students and they found out that Roundtree was a slave owner. And being in the north illegally was owning slaves, so, you know, just really, I think that's that's a big part of it and, you know, really why people want to look at that name and just kind of the history around that. One of the things that I think would be helpful in our next community input sessions would be if having a facilitator that can facilitate the meeting while, you know, staff members or Adam kind of goes through the information. I think it worked, it seemed to work okay for the first session, the first community dialogue on policing. But I think it just seemed like there were times during the Parks and Rec one where, you know, Adam and Luke were trying to keep up with the questions that were being submitted electronically in the chats and then also kind of steering the conversation, so that would be some feedback for me is, you know, maybe see if you can find somebody that can facilitate the meetings and then have other people just be able to focus more on the content and stuff like that, so.
Robin, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
I really feel like everything I can think of has been covered right now.
Okay, Kathy?
Nothing further.
Ken?
No addition.
Eileen?
Nothing to add.
And Isaac?
Nothing to add.
And as it would have been, I was out of town for this one, but I'll be here for the next couple, so I guess that's just the way life goes. All right, so next, Adam, are we ready to move from inclusivity to COVID?
Sure.
No, we aren't. We don't want.
No, we don't want to.
We don't want inclusivity and COVID in the same breath, actually. Okay.
Okay, so obviously in the staff note, we just wanted to kind of give you an update, and I think the first thing I want to do is give a big shout out to obviously Shannon Bunson, our Building Maintenance Superintendent. He has unbelievably rocked the house in keeping all of our staff safe and has put in probably way more hours than I think anybody would like him to do. But all I can say, I think from both Howard and I, what a heck of an employee. He has been detrimental in, you know, making everybody feel safe with ensuring that we have the PPE that we need. He's been very cautious and very productive in all of our meetings to ensure that the sanitizing stations are there, that he came up with a great system for Plexiglas, Plexiglas for all of our, you know, areas that have high contact with the public. He spent a lot of time, you know, over the last two weeks here at the library, putting a lot of parameters and guidelines in there to try to assist that situation. He did the museum, you know, he helped with the museum as well. So I think, I just want to really give a big shout out to him. He has been a real godsend in this, in this crazy time, as well as all of the staff, and I think that's one of the things I want to say too, is our staff, I think, has done an amazing job in handling an unprecedented situation and constantly every day where, you know, we're pivoting from, you know, trying to understand how to, how to get a handle on this thing and understanding what, you know, parameters and procedures and requirements we need to put in place. But basically, just to kind of summarize where things are currently at with the city. As of Monday, July 13th, we did reopen City Hall to the public. We have seen an increase, obviously, in the people coming into the building. And for the majority, I would say we could probably count on the number of our hands, you know, the amount of people not wearing a mask when they're coming into City Hall. We recommend that they all wear them when they come in. For the most part, they've been doing that. Meetings, we've all been wearing masks or if we, you know, social distancing enough so that we feel comfortable, that we don't. But generally, everything we've been in in the last few weeks, we've been kind of increasing the mask requirements, just because we've seen the numbers. Again, we have the Plexiglas, so our staff have asked for their feedback and from what I've heard, for the most part, everybody does feel comfortable. We have masks available, we have gloves, we have sanitizer. So we've been, you know, kind of doing everything we can to ensure that if somebody coming in does feel safe. We've got two doors open, basically, one door in the front of City Hall and then the handicap access door that's open from eight to four-thirty now that anybody can kind of come in. And then basically, we still have signage all over the place. We've put in obviously some increased procedures with, you know, the library, the library is looking at reopening. I think Jesse's on here, I'll give her a chance if she wants to add anything, but they definitely have gone to some, you know, extremes, they've removed furniture, they're requiring masks, they're kind of doing it in an hour session. I don't want to steal your thunder, Jesse, so I see you're there. Is there anything you want to add about the library since I just touched on it?
No, I think you pretty much covered it. Today was our first day allowing public in. The hours for the public right now are twelve to four, Tuesday through Friday, and Saturday is nine to one. So we'll be reviewing if this is the best approach next week after we have some experience. We are requiring masks in the building and today everyone was really respectful of that. We didn't have any issues.
Nice. The museum obviously has done the same thing. Eric, I see you're on here too. Is there anything you want to say about the museum?
I can say that the reopening process at the museum has been pretty smooth. We've had a trickle of people and everyone is cooperating with making reservations in advance, or we have a way where if we have the ability to accommodate a walk-ins, we can do that so safely. Everybody's either been wearing their own mask or they are happy to take advantage of the masks we're providing. Shannon did help to get us some new hand sanitizer stations throughout the museum that have worked nicely, one of which has museum branding right at the entryway, so it's sort of welcoming, you know, and that's not overly scary. So far, it's worked, it's worked quite well.
And then I guess before we go on to some of the other stuff in the update, I guess, are there any questions about or comments, concerns about the City Hall, library, or museum?
Robin?
Are we going to talk more about masks? Is that what you say, other stuff, or?
That is correct.
Okay.
Right now, yep.
Yep, I'm good until that conversation.
Jason?
Nothing right now.
Kathy?
Just a quick question. I'm assuming that the public is still good with making their, using the city's deposit box if they choose not to come in, like to pay their water bill, even if it's during the day? Or is that still encouraged to do?
Extremely.
Because I've had a couple of people ask me if, once things opened up, if they were going to still be able to do that during the day.
Yeah, so you'll see in a lot of, many of our communication, we still have on the COVID-19 page that although we are open, we are still encouraging people to utilize Zoom.
Okay.
And the Dropbox is emptied at least twice a day, if not more, to keep up with any incoming payments.
Thanks, Nicola. Ken, any questions on the library, the City Hall opening, or the museum?
No, no question.
Eileen?
No questions.
Isaac?
No questions.
Okay, Adam?
Okay, so let's talk about masks, Robin, since you brought it up. That's the next one on the list. So obviously, recently, within the last few weeks, municipalities have been discussing in or passed a form of municipal mass ordinance or resolution requiring residents or visitors to wear masks in public places. So so far, Green Bay, Dane County, Madison specifically, Racine, Superior, Glendale, Milwaukee, Shorewood, Whitefish Bay and Whitewater have all passed either a ordinance or a resolution specifically saying that masks are required to be worn in public places. I did send you guys an email, I think yesterday, in the COVID-19 update with two kind of versions that I saw. I will tell you, in the meetings I've been, this conversation has been very mixed. From a legal standpoint, there is some question of because of the fact that we're all in uncharted territory and there really is no true kind of legal history, there's a lot of question and uncertainty about if somebody, if you were to create an ordinance or a resolution and somebody were to challenge it, what would happen? Specifically, the enforcement of this would be directly related to, we have continued to declare that state of emergency, so under Wisconsin state statutes, it's a bit broad, but it does give us the ability as a city to utilize that state of emergency for this particular type of ordinance or recommendation. Typically, what I've seen in the majority of the resolutions or kind of ordinances, it varies. I think Green Bay's fine is seventy-five dollars, and then you can also be ticketed for trespassing. Other municipalities have created this, but have stressed that, you know, it is kind of going, they are going to enforce it, but it's not something they're going to be actively pursuing due to obviously other police matters that may take more high priority. So I think one of the questions I kind of wanted to get a better feel on from the council is what are the thoughts? Is this something that you would like city staff to invest more time in and bringing an actual resolution or ordinance forward? So just kind of wanted to open up to see where everybody's at.
Okay, Robin?
I want to talk first.
Yeah, you just happened to be first on my screen tonight, see?
Yeah, so as a business owner, we have taken the stance of strongly encourage, but we're having staff expressing fears that it's not mandatory and they, you know, are nervous they're going to get sick from customers. And so I guess I would say I look somewhat to having some sort of, I can choose what to do with a personal business, we can just make that rule what it is, but I think it's more of it being a norm and that they might consider expecting the same thing from one business to the next and with a couple more big stores normalizing it, I feel like we have that that trend going in that direction where people will not feel so put out each time that they encounter a new business that is enforcing that. I am very concerned about students returning and us not having something in place, so I guess I would look to, you know, potentially have this addressed this month if we're going to do it. I definitely understand personal decisions where people feel that it's a higher risk to either wear the mask or just want to have the autonomy to not have to wear a mask. I feel like it's fair to point out there that we're required to wear shoes and shirts and things like that in public, and I think that it's reasonable to extend that to a mask in such times. So I have mixed feelings, but I think I lean strongly towards enacting something.
Okay, Jason?
I know at the university, they're going to be, or they have a policy right now that anyone going in buildings, it's mandatory that you have to wear a mask unless there's an exception for, you know, a health reason or disability or something like that. So campus is already doing that and with, you know, the influx of students coming back to campus, I feel like it would be helpful to maybe have some continuity between that, you know, so they're getting, you know, that message on campus, but then also, you know, as they interact more with the community, you know, that message is the same from that point. So I guess, kind of in, with that continuity, I think that could be helpful. I'm trying to think of anything else right now. I would, I would definitely like to see a draft of something to be able to review and just kind of see. to be able to review and just kind of see what come what is developed and kind of go from there.
Okay, Kathy?
I, first a question. Can you define public places?
In the Whitewater, I printed it off. And, for instance, it specifically identifies the farmer's market and their, those things as a public space. So it, it specifically designed, so I would say, read the Whitewater one. It also talks about the exceptions in terms of public spaces. So yeah. It says not private residences, not residential apartment buildings, are not considered to be buildings open to the public. So I guess what we would be talking about are places that are open to the public.
So we would be talking businesses then?
Yes.
Okay. Then I have a very strong feeling that what I would like to see is just a reinforcement encouraging people to do the social distancing, to, to wear masks. I, I have a problem with the concept of ordering people to do it. And I think of, I mean, public spaces is like City Park for an event. Music in the Park Series. And if there's not going to be a legitimate enforcement, what's the point? I see the community members start to get snippy with each other. If they see someone in a public space that doesn't have a mask on because it's mandated and then what about the people who physically cannot wear a mask? How are they identified so they're not singled out or approached? And I, I think that in, and I know that a lot of the businesses are implementing their own rules as far as if you want to come in here, you have to wear a mask. I personally think that is a better way to look at the business community instead of demanding that they all do. I think with recent, very recent events here in Platteville, the businesses really understand that, that they don't want to be caught up and but I, I, I just would not like to see us have a statement where, where they're mandatory.
Okay, thank you. Ken, masks?
Now, thinking about it. First, I'm thinking about what is the status of Wisconsin as far as the number of illnesses, virus going up in the state of Wisconsin. Adam could probably answer that. It is going up, as I recall, and of course, you know, our states in the United States are tremendous as far as numbers. So I think as well that masks be required. Now, if a business wants to say, what are you going to do with a bar, for example? An eating place as far as wearing a mask? So we have that situation for certain businesses, but I think businesses should be allowed to have the requirement that masks be worn at their business. And since some of the bigger stores are requiring this, I think it's very appropriate that businesses be allowed to have masks be mandatory. And then I have a side question for the chief of police. And that is, what do you say to your police as far as, I'm looking at two, two standpoints. I've been visited by police, you might think, well, what did you do wrong? But been visited and they not, do not have masks on. So what's the rule there as far as the police visiting people and talking with them and wearing a mask? And the other one is, what are the police going to do when they go to a business such as the bar? Do they wear a mask at the bar? Where is Doug?
At the city manager's spot right now. Ken, you're asking what our officers will do when they go into a tavern?
Yes, first of all, I have two questions. One, when you talk to people and your officers have no mask on. And I, if I have a mask on and somebody comes to the door as an officer, what am I supposed to do? What are they supposed to be doing? Talking without a mask?
What we're trying to do is either wear the masks or maintain social distancing so that a lot of times they're conducting their business with people at a distance of probably well in excess of six feet. If they're getting up close and personal with people, masks are the order of the day. When they're going into taverns, Ken, just given the number of people that are going to be present in them, I would think that they're also going to want to wear masks because in a lot of those places, social distancing isn't a viable option.
But it's not, you're saying that you don't have a department policy?
In terms of wearing the masks or not? When they're getting up close and personal with people, probably were to the point where they're going to have to make an arrest. A lot of people are you're going to want to have the masks.
But they're not required.
We leave that up to personal preference.
Okay. So I was curious about those two questions because my experience. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Eileen?
I guess Adam has mentioned a resolution or an ordinance and I just, I know, well, he's back. So is, is there a reason why you would use a resolution person ordinance?
If you'd go the resolution route, that is more towards what Kathy had kind of indicated is the resolution is more a strong recommendation that it won't be, the enforcement isn't there, but it's asking people to voluntarily comply. The ordinance is something, if you wanted to go that route, that means that it is a, it's flat out in the municipal code. And then we are enforcing that by state statutes.
Okay. And I believe Whitewater's is an ordinance. I can't remember if Green Bay's is an ordinance or a resolution.
I think they have, they have both. They have the ordinance and then they also have a resolution talking about the ordinance. So they double.
Okay. The other comment I would make is that I agree that businesses often like to have the choice to make their own decision on that. I've also heard that some businesses would appreciate having something either citywide or preferably probably statewide so that they're not the outlier if they ask for masks for when people come in, it would be, they feel beneficial to them to have a resolution or a state law that would back them up. Because otherwise, some businesses really have semi-rate customers who don't want to wear the mask. And they really don't have anything to say except, you know, that's our policy here in this business. So I'm agreeing with Jason. I think that I would like to see a draft of a resolution and perhaps an ordinance too. I don't think they'd be that dissimilar. So something to consider. I did see something on the news this evening that Governor Evers may be considering a statewide mask requirement and that then may take it out of our hands anyway.
Isaac?
Oh, some mixed feelings on this one here. The first one would be the public spaces comment. So, I mean, that's a pretty broad term is what a public space is. You know, I live right across from the park and the pool here and I guess I see people walking down the sidewalk by themselves, nobody within a hundred feet wearing a mask. So if that's something that we're going to implement, you know, with a public space, I don't know. The businesses, pretty much, I'm in business and the ones I speak with, you know, they want to have it left up to themselves. They don't want, again, they don't want to be told by somebody that you got to wear this because some customers won't go there then. You know, they may go to somewhere else. And then the other thing is the the following through, if you give a ticket, you know, how are you going to follow through with that? Make sure that it's, you know, if a person decides to go to court, are we going to have a lot of legal fees in time with the attorney to see, you know, that, that we can actually give them a ticket for not wearing a mask? So then we're talking, Doug just made a point, you know, we don't have a, his department doesn't have a trying to think of the right word here.
Mandatory.
Mandatory, there we go, that the police officers need to wear masks. So now all of a sudden, you're going to start looking at the park and recreations department that are out working on a public place. Are they going to have to wear a mask? Are the people in the City Hall going to have to wear a mask? So there's a lot of things to consider here. I guess I might be interested in seeing a, you know, a draft of something, but you know, we're bombarded every day between the TV, the radio, if you still read the newspaper online about social distancing, wearing a mask, washing your hands, everything. I mean, that's about all you see anymore or hear about. So I think people are educated enough that, you know, leave it up to their decision and their discretion on whether they want it and not us telling them they have to do it. So.
So I asked everybody else, so I'll give my opinion on this. I would like to believe that everyone in our community will watch out for everyone in our community. Because that's really what it's about. A mask is about you not infecting someone else. And so I, I understand, Robin, how your employees must feel when people come in and don't wear a mask and it puts them at risk. And, and so I'd really like to believe that we would have enough respect for other people to wear masks. That being said, I don't see that. Highly unfortunate, but I don't see it. So, Adam, I guess I'd like to see a draft too, of a resolution, of an ordinance, of something. I mean, my understanding is Walmart just is instituting a mask requirement. Menards has instituted a mask requirement. I don't know because I haven't read yet if Farm and Fleet has done similar. But it's becoming more prevalent in businesses because we know from experience here in town that businesses that were open are no longer open like they were because now they have employees who have tested positive. So it's a, it's very, it's a very difficult situation. It's a very difficult situation. All right, that's COVID, I guess. Figure out where my agenda went. It is right here now. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three strategic planning council values, strengths, and plan themes review. Adam?
Yeah. Both of them. Obviously, yeah, Ben and I have been continuing to work on the strategic plan and at the last meeting, we kind of kicked it off and Ben did a great job of kind of providing a synopsis of what strategic plans are and what to look for. And the homework that we kind of gave council members was, again, nothing has to be done tonight. This is just to kind of kick off some more dialogue. So I think the first thing we wanted to talk about was have you guys look at the community values. So in the two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen strategic plan, you know, the values we had were we believe in a path to a successful quality of life for all ages. We value welcoming collaborative community relationships. We value a safe place to live, work, and play. We value quality education accessible to all. We believe in respect and transparency in how we govern. We value the youthful energy and intellect that comes with being a college town. We believe in planning and making thoughtful investments to secure our future. And we value our area's history and the individual stories that have collectively made us what we are today. So I guess just kind of kickstarting this tonight. With those community values, I guess we'll just open it up. Are there anything that, do you feel these still hold water? Do you feel there were some things that need to be changed? We're obviously going to be continuing to do this throughout the months of August and September, but this is just kind of the first opportunity for council members to weigh in on what your thoughts were. Do you think these still are valid? Are there ones that you would like to see added? Are there ones you would like to see removed? So we'll start with community values.
All right, Robin? Always first.
I see a typo, sorry. We value our area's history and the individual stories that collectively we are today. Um, no, I, I think it's a great list. I'm sure I could add to it, but I think that it's really interesting to read this list in a new lens. I just feel like we have a different context to apply to each of these points that we get to strive towards in the future. So.
Okay, Jason?
I would kind of echo the same sentiment as Robin. I think it's a good starting point and I'm really looking forward to hopefully getting a wide variety of community feedback. I feel like the dialogue sessions that we have had, we've been getting feedback from, from a variety of community members and I hope that the strategic planning process continues to move in that same direction. So we're making sure that we, we can reach out to, to as many community members as we can. So.
Okay. Kathy?
This might be a little nitpicky. I agree with a lot of what Robin and Jason have said. The, the one thing that I, one of the things I, I get hung up on is, and this stems from my days at the chamber. We value a safe place to live, work, and play. Well, I don't really play anymore at my age. So we're, the, within the tourism industry, the word is moving more to recreate. I mean, it's like, I know that we have a, a sign that says we're a playful ci- city. I just, I just, the word play just sounds like we're, I don't know, too, whatever. And then, because I don't know the background of the, a lot of the input with this, the the one thing maybe for conversation down the road is the, the piece that says we value the youthful energy and intellect that comes with being a college town. I'm not sure what the intent of that was or is to try to factor out. Obviously, if these are values, how do you market? I mean, how do you tag how well you're doing? And with it being a college town, to me, it's, it's like when we value youthful energy and intellect, we're targeting, this tells me that it's just because we have a university. If we didn't have a university, do we not have youthful energy? And it'll, because I think we do. And just something, a different way of looking at that, that's all. That's it.
Ken?
Well, I have a couple. The main, the first one is the second one. I think that needs to be clarified more. We value welcoming collaborative community relationships. I think that could be reworded. So that's one. And then another one is going down, we believe in planning and making thoughtful investments. I think you need to clarify what you're saying there as far as investments. I think those are the two main ones that I see at this time.
Eileen?
I agree with Kathy. The word play, I, I think, is outdated. So recreate might be better. And I also, I also think we value the youthful energy and intellect that comes with being a college town. Says that we value them, maybe not saying that everybody else can have a youthful attitude or intellect. And also town, I think, you know, it used to be called town. I think city is more appropriate if we're going to leave that in there. And also town, I think, you know, it used to be called town. I think city is more appropriate if we're going to leave that in there.
Isaac.
I'd agree with Eileen on the uh, the college town being changed to the the college city as well as trying to get something put into that, not only just the um, energy and intellect that comes with the college city, but as well as everybody else in the population as well. And then I agree with her and um, Kathy regarding the word play should probably change to recreate as well. So I thought that's a good start.
Okay, and uh, let me uh, let me give you some background on um the value youthful energy and intellect that comes from being a college town. I believe there was a lot, I recall and Eileen, uh, it was only Eileen and Ken that would have been at that meeting too. But I recall that there was a lot of discussion about the number of students at UW Platteville that do projects like for um, Parks and Rec or that do projects for Howard that do design projects. And so it was like, I mean, it was, this was something that was talked about quite a bit at that session in my recollection is man, without the, I mean, we get, we gain so much from having the university and university students here because, you know, they come in and do studies of this or they make presentations on that or they're interns in our businesses. And so the question became, how do you in, how do you talk about that as a value? And I think that this is the sentence or that tried to capture that. Um, Howard, would you, I mean, you kind of agree with? I mean, I recall these discussions about things like that.
Yes, I agree. We have a very collaborative relationship with the engineering department over there for studies and other other activities. And I I agree that a lot of what you're saying um came from the collaborative work that they do for me and for other departments.
So I think the youthful energy and intellect kind of thing that got associated with the university and the way that was put together was because of all this, you know, design teams and you know, interns and everything else. So um, just to provide that as a little a little background in that. Um. And and the whole investments thing, I think this was about the time we were discovering our um our dire financial situation. Investments actually was about doing a financial management plan uh, and looking at planning and then making. So maybe um, we believe in planning and making, it should maybe say making thoughtful financial decisions. Because that's really what it was about. It's about financial decisions uh, to uh, secure our future. Otherwise, I think you know, there were only three of us that were around at that point in time uh, that contributed to this. But uh, some staff members might have things they want to weigh in. Uh, Ryan, were you there at that meeting? I I don't think so.
Uh, maybe, maybe.
It was in, it was at Mountain City Bank.
Yeah, I was there. That was probably my first experience of the strategic planning. So.
Ah, okay. Howard, anything you want to add?
Nothing.
Uh, Doug.
He doesn't have anything.
Okay. Nicola, you wouldn't have been there, so I'm not going to ask. Candace, you wouldn't have been there. Joe?
No, I have nothing to add.
Uh, just see.
I have an addition. Artistic. What do, what, what do we see here? Anything about artistic aspect of the city?
Yep, we don't. So artistic is a word that is not included. Okay. Uh, Jesse, were you there? Jesse Lee Jones.
Yeah, I was there. Um, and I don't have anything to add at the time.
Okay, and Luke?
Just said I like play. Um, I uh, yeah, I hope you can all find ways to enjoy things while you recreate. So, but that's, I I I'm I'm fine with it either way.
Yeah. And I like play too, because I do still play. I call it that. I would more likely call it play than recreate, but whatever.
I will.
Adam, we can move on, I think, from community values. We got two or three areas we can maybe massage. So.
And then obviously, commute, the next two sections are probably going to come more out on the eighteenth when we kind of do our deep dive. But again, just the community strengths that were talked about was the school system um, that we continue to be a growing community, uh, community size, large enough to offer attractions but small enough to connect with neighbors and leaders. Um, a safe community, good city services slash city officials who care about the community, recreation and cultural opportunities and community partnerships and volunteer spirit. So I don't know if we want to do another once around or.
Sure. Uh, Robin?
Yeah, I I'll also just say I was at the Mountain City meeting.
Oh, were you?
Yeah, and I I think just the nature of our sticky note, putting them up on the board, sometimes like phrases from different sticky notes got mushed into one sentence. So
Yep.
I think that was part of why those verbiages the way it is. Um, I really appreciate uh, Ken's comment about the arts. And um, that kind of is covered here under maybe recreation and cultural opportunities. Um, but just thinking that that is part of that thoughtful investments when we're talking about business development that uh, valuing the arts in this community. We know that emphasizing the arts will pay in tourism and um, you know, all sorts of, I guess, educational opportunities and community building, et cetera. So I'd like to continue to emphasize that under both of those categories. Um. Gosh, I'm sure there's things that are missing here. I just want to say that we're an awesome community and I'm proud to be in here. So.
There we go.
Yeah.
Okay. Jason.
Um, pretty much the same as the community values piece of it. I think um, it'll be, uh, it'll be nice to kind of see where, you know, things go in the next set of years, um, given kind of you know, the the events that have been happening. Um. And I think, you know, for some of them, we've already kind of started to touch on getting feedback around community strengths, I think with, you know, we've started to get feedback about city services, city officials, um, recreation and cultural opportunities and just kind of you know, expanding what we have to offer. And and again, um, you know, recognizing um, you know, trying to find cultural opportunities for you know, a diverse number of of people in in the community. So, um. I don't think I have anything else. Again, I'm really looking forward to gathering continued feedback from the community, see what uh, community members have to say about this. So.
Okay, Kathy.
Um, a couple of things. Making a note, sorry. Um. Community strengths, um, under the school systems. We have K twelve and UWP. I think we need to acknowledge Southwest Tech. Um, they are opening an outreach center here, um, which will um uh, be a um, a huge asset for the community. Um, the one thing that I I see, I see two things missing that I think should be spelled out as far as strength in that is um, our healthcare. Um, uh, for example, Southwest Health, I mean, we have a state of the art hospital that is a huge community strength. And the other thing um, that I think we're so close to um, that we probably don't see it. Um, but I think a strength of our community is the variety of businesses that we have. There are a lot of communities even our size that do not have the 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 width and breadth of the type of businesses that we do here. We're very, very fortunate for a population of our size.
Okay, Ken.
Well, I was looking at the second one, um, growing community. I thought some different wording wording for that such as um an active and vibrant community. Instead of the word growing. So my first words are active and vibrant community.
Yep.
That's it for now.
Okay. Eileen.
Um, I guess even though it's a city service, uh, perhaps adding the airport because not every community has an airport. So that would also be a definite plus. I agree when Kathy mentioned about referring somehow to the variety of businesses that we have because we don't have businesses specifically listed anywhere that I can see. That's all.
And Isaac.
Well, I guess on this one here would be kind of a combination with some of the people who've said, I agree with Ken on the um, instead of the growing community, the something aligns with the active and vibrant because unfortunately, right now, we're really not growing that much. Um, also the hospital, we've got a state of the art hospital that is expanding again. Um, you know, one of the bigger ones in the area. Same with that, what I mean said about the airport, you know, we're fortunate enough to have, although it's not right and down, it is still the city of Blackfellow's airport. And then back to what Kat said again about the Southwest Tech, but um, you know, the um the community growth with the universe, the Southwest Tech area in the city of Blackfellow. So.
Okay, and I would uh, echo about the school systems. I would change it to PK four to twelve because it is PK, we do have PK four, not just K twelve. UWP, Southwest Tech, and I believe St. Mary's is open again. When this was written, St. Mary's wasn't open. So I think um.
I also want to mention outstanding childcare centers. Have some great ones in Platteville and we could probably use, but it's uh, it's that's relevant when we're talking about a workforce that we have some very well established and uh, well-run childcare centers.
And I had written down, we have a strong business community. And I I believe we have not, I mean, this has been a terrible, terrible uh six-month period, eight-month period. But I mean, I believe our businesses continue to work uh, and are strong. So a strong business community, outstanding childcare. And then um uh, I also saw a little note that said we have uh, lots and lots of um yeah, a a strong business community supported by our uh a gr- a great group of professionals, whether that be the Chamber, whether that be PATA, whether that be Main Street, whether that be PBII, whether that be Grant County Economic Development, just a real strong business communities uh, supported by some outstanding professions. So. Okay, so that's uh, consider whether these strengths. Okay. Strategic plan theme. I don't know how we can talk about themes until we have.
Yeah, this isn't one I don't, you don't need to go around the, around the, around the room, but I think what I would ask is when you're thinking about how we've kind of structured the strategic plan, thinking about six months out, one to two years, three years, and then if money was no object, what would you like to see? When you're coming up with your examples, you know, we've kind of targeted about three to six. Start thinking about when you write that down, do any of those fall into the buckets that were created last time? If they do, then we're good. But if you're seeing a theme where it's not, then be prepared when we get to the strategic planning process on the eighteenth um, to really bring that up and look at, hey, we may need to change a theme here because those themes are going to be retrospective of all the ideas that we kind of put up on the board and kind of pick and choose. Um, so that's how I would would recommend structuring that is when you're thinking about, you know, the six months, the one, two or three years, and then if money was no object, and you write down your examples, start looking at what you're putting down. And if they fall into one of the categories, awesome. But if they don't, then make sure you earmark it or think about what theme that would fit into.
And and I guess I would, I I believe that I sent the link to everybody. But these big buckets were like, the name of that bucket was formed by looking at the, at the action items that went under it. So I guess I would suggest that, you know, the name of the bucket wasn't as important as it was to talk about what was going to happen. So I guess, you know, it's, it's about what's going to happen that that becomes important. For instance, you don't see on here roads, right? Howard, streets. Poor Howard, he would think that would be a very important thing to put on here, streets. But if you read underneath some of these items, you'll see that keeping up with streets and other things, it was an included item on in that bucket. So take a look at at that and you'll find new ones, I'm sure. So let's see, I have to find my agenda again. Is that it? No. Uh, Ben, did we get everything you needed? I had to give you a opportunity to shake your head there in front of that M. All right, so um we'll continue then with our last information and discussion item, which is our twenty twenty city goals quarter two update. Adam, that's again. I think. Although I don't.
I think he's frozen.
I think Adam's frozen.
I think so.
Doug, you're going to have to go poke him or something.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Looking at the theme, why come we don't list infrastructure? That's Howard's area. That should be in there.
Well, it is. Kathy, if if you read the underlying material to the themes, it is in there. It just wasn't. It was, it was among the thing, things put into that one bucket. So you would have to read the goals under the themes.
Also fiscal sustainability. Where is it? I don't see it listed anyplace. Where is that one?
What do you mean? It is.
Whereabout is it?
Uh. I don't know.
I went through here, I couldn't find it.
Okay. Well, I will look back.
My eyes are getting weaker, so maybe I can't read as well.
Fiscal sustainability was uh, under the bullets, under the strategic plan themes. It's uh, way at the bottom there.
Whereabout?
So it would be um in the staff note, you had community values, community strengths.
Looking underneath the goal.
Oh.
It's under the strategic plan themes.
I I know it's listed, but I'm looking underneath the goal.
Nicola.
The goals.
Yeah.
And fiscal infrastructure is there, business, marketing, connections, housing, inquiry relations and other.
And that's probably fiscal sustainability. All right, uh, Nicola, he's trying to relate the themes in the strategic plan to the quarter two goals. And that's where he's missing, where fiscal sustainability is.
I see. Okay.
Okay, did we find Adam?
I'm back. Can you hear me?
We can, oh, there you are. Yes, you're under city communications. We can.
Okay, um, so real brief with this one, just again, this is um, we provided a twenty twenty goalless quarter two report. And a lot of this information is what we obviously provide to council kind of on a weekly basis within the um, council communication. Um, again, with COVID nineteen, there's been some kind of delays in some of the projects we've been working on, but we did provide this update. So I guess um, interest of time, if there's any direct questions that anybody has, um, we can answer them. Otherwise, if you review it and you have any questions, by all means, reach out to either myself or Department Head. Um, and we'll give you some further information. But I guess we'll just offer the opportunity. Are there any questions that you suffer or concerns with the quarter and the goal update?
Well, Adam, um, Ken mentioned that fiscal sustainability wasn't in the list on the quarter goals. And so, but I do know that, yeah, there is current work to to update the financial management.
Yeah, and as I was thinking about what um, well, Ken just pointed out and actually. Yeah, and as I was thinking about what, um, what Ken just pointed out, and actually, these goals were developed before Adam came on board. This was a 2019 year process. And as I looked back, um, at the work done by our former city manager, and as I developed these goals as the acting city manager with all the other directors, um, there was, uh, I think when we went from 2018 to 2019, at that point, it was felt that the fiscal sustainability goal had been met, and there was a shift towards another, uh, goal, which I believe was the business goal, so that kind of took the place of the fiscal sustainability. Um, and I think that, that definitely is a fair assessment. We have really settled down financially from where we were back in 2016, 2017. Um, we did an advanced refunding, which helped with our debt service. Um, and we've seen some growth in our tax base, which has helped immensely. Um, TID six still needs help, but it's doing better than it was. TID seven has tremendously turned the corner with TID five, so I think that it was felt that that goal of fiscal sustainability had been met. Now, in the coronavirus era, that's, uh, you know, not quite as positive an outlook as it was, but it's still, um, it's still, you know, not terrible, given that we do have some support at the moment from the federal and state government through the CARES Act.
But I think fiscal sustainability has to be kept in here as part of our theme, because we need to have it ten, twenty, thirty years from now. Need to be fiscal, fiscal, fiscal responsible. So that's my opinion, it should be left. There's, there's not enough covered underneath the business part. Businesses, that section, we're talking about redevelopment, and the other part, you're talking about collaboration with PD. Um, I know you're talking about, uh, trying to get a better management as far as our loans and so forth, but I think we need to stay in. That's my comment.
And, and I think Nicola pointed out that where we thought we may be, may not be as rosy as we thought at the beginning of 2020. You know, I get a little bit, uh, nervous when I hear about a $250 billion state budget reduction that's gonna be announced. And while we have talked about, uh, shared revenue and quote-unquote "the promise" that it's not going to be affected, uh, I don't think that we should be naive enough to believe that it won't be, so. But you're right, Ken, we need to continue down the road and watch our fiscal areas. All right, guys, uh, that would be the, anybody else with any other questions on this P-goals quarter two update?
I had a comment on the housing goals. Um, this is something that could be done within the community, but it could be a focus of the cities to just host community, and, and I know we have other community dialogues going on, but on lending programs that are out there, USDA rural development loans, um, just information from realtors and the banks. I don't feel like I've heard of an event like that going on recently, and with our other, um, rehab loan, it would, they'd marry up together, so just wondering if staff might be able to put something like that together.
Yeah, we definitely did, um, and I think Barb can speak to this. We had a, we had a pretty good, the minute I got here, we had a pretty good joint venture going with WEDA, um, that we were gonna put on a, uh.
Housing forum?
Housing forum, and it was supposed to occur at Southwest Tech. And we had, I think at the time, almost fifty people signed up.
Right.
That were supposed to attend, and then COVID-19 hit, and we had to cancel.
Right. So, so I think, and, and that was a, kind of the beginning of COVID-19. In the meantime, our WEDA contact has retired. Uh, people are starting to open up again, so, a- and I think people are now more familiar with doing Zoom meetings. And so when we canceled, I think it was scheduled for like March 17th or something.
Yeah, March 24th.
Or some, yeah.
I think that, that's something we need to do.
And, and it was right at the time when it was like, everything's shutting down, and, and we're just, we're just not, but I think you bring up a very good point, so. Yep, a- and in fact, I think Eileen was on a housing, uh, call this morning.
I was.
Yep.
I'm talking neighborhood, so we could discuss that when we have our housing discussion.
Right. So, okay, um, I guess we're to the end of the agenda. Uh, to those who, uh, interacted with, um, PAA and Five Bugles Design this week as it related to the fire station, thank you. To those who were able to attend the community dialogues, both about policing and about parks and recreation, either and or both, thank you. Our next community dialogue is August 4th. And then beyond that, the following one will be August 19th. August 4th on the strategic plan, August 19th at the, on the museum. And I'm sure we'll hear more about that. So folks, I believe we're at the end of the agenda, and that means, um, that means we only have one motion left.
Motion to adjourn, Barb.
Second. You'll make it or not.
Colette?
Okay. Art?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Ha?
Yes.
So she carries.
All right, guys, we're done, and thank you all for your attention and for your, and, and we're off to the next one in two weeks, so, all right.